List, meeting to order, uh, regular meeting of Rockford School Board, uh, to order. Uh, please either, uh, silent. Uh, approval of agenda, we do have one addition. It is our technology. Um, strategic plan. Uh, we had this. Want to go, um, six? Six, uh, six, seven?
Six, seven.
Okay.
And John, can we hand, uh?
Oh, yep, I got Lisa wanted to add also. Six point seven, um, to a tech. Uh, strategic plan, strategic plan. And then, uh, six point eight, Lisa wanted to talk about, uh, parking situation by, like a discussion about the, um, event, event parking.
Yeah, by the high school.
Yeah. With those two edits, uh, can I get a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? So hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passing unanimously. Uh, visitor input, we didn't have anybody sign up. Um, would you like to speak? All right. Sandra, you can speak. Visitor. You got your timer, Lisa? Three minutes.
Good evening, board, I'm Cassandra Haney, I'm here tonight as a mom of four kids in the district. Um, I have one in Parkview, one in North Star and two in the high school. I know tonight you're going to be looking at your budget and, uh, I'm really implore, here to implore you to do two things. First, please, when you are looking at where to cut, look at all other options besides teaching staff. We are a school, that is our primary objective, to educate our kids. Um, we have schools that are neighboring, that are going down to four days a week and other schools that are neighboring that have deep cuts that they are making, uh, we want to continue to be, uh, the best option for education on the Iron Range. The second thing that I'd ask you to do when looking at the budget is to please pass a budget within the next month. The reason I ask you to do this is simple, um, kids that are deciding between CIS, which is College in Schools, which happen in the high school, and PSEO need to decide right around April because they can register for col- for college classes at Minnesota North in April, so we want them to have a good choice. I personally think that the best place for high school students to learn is in the high school where they have teachers who are able to balance well the rigor and care that they need as seventeen and eighteen year olds, but at minimum they need to be able to have a choice and if the choice is, I don't know what's going to be available or something that they know is going to be available at the college, of course, we're going, they're going to choose the college, which means we're going to have even further reductions in our numbers. Um, just for sake of clarity, I'm not on the teacher's contract, so I'm not asking for anything for myself, um, just here as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board? Okay, moving on. Uh, consent agenda. Oh, no, wait, wait. Gross Anderson, I'm sorry.
Well, we can skip them.
Pete, you ready to roll?
Hi, Pete. Yeah.
Ready? Floor's yours.
Go, Bill.
Final?
Final, not final, final, but final. Nice warm weather, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it'll be a pretty short one tonight. Um, talk about the final project, uh, previous projects, budget summary, and I'll kind of go through those, a couple highlights, and then our final contract amendment, so that part is final, final. The K A amendment number seventeen. So I think you guys saw this slide last time, but, uh, obviously all the projects, high school, Laurentian, North Star, demo, and all the stuff, and the District Admin Building, all a hundred percent, and then fourteen of four, this was the design, so that's zero percent. So again, going through the projects budget summary, and then our amendment, and then we'll ask for approval of that amendment. It's good news tonight, so. So finalized project budget, uh, just a reminder, Fund Six is the referendum construction budget, Fund Five was deferred maintenance, so your LTMF and, uh, check on iPhone. So some of those funds were used at North Star, with the gym model, Phase One mechanical, and some of Phase Two. Highlight that as we go through. So you've seen this slide before too, there's a lot there, but basically it summarizes each project and the total costs. So working around elementary, or Laurentian, North Star, the demo projects, the high school, Phase Two admin, that's where that split is, some of it was under Fund Six, some of it under Fund Five in the red. Uh, and then Phase One admin building completely under Fund Five, the deferred maintenance, uh, some cost for the building fourteen oh four, for purchasing the building and the design, and basically a total grand cost currently of two hundred and sixteen million, and total Fund Five cost of four point one. Questions on that? So again, you've seen this before, uh, the couple things I wanted to highlight is the current budget column that you see is all the costs to date per the district, uh, in the reports that we receive, and then all the committed costs to contractors and Crowe Sanderson. So not all that has been paid out yet, but that is the current budget for the committed costs on the hard cost side. I wanted to highlight this one, uh, so in the demo column, the demo is actually, the demo itself is the twelve million, but the way things get coded, uh, in the district's finances, some of it got coded to the same, uh, cost code, so that's why you see this higher number here. And that was when, working with the business manager Andrea, uh, just to make sure our numbers lined up, it's when she pulls that code, that's how the costs get put in there, so. Uh, but I did break that out where the demo is the twelve million, just like here, and then the two point six is the Phase Two District Admin stuff, and then the miscellaneous, uh, nothing wrong with that, right?
No.
It's good to hear that, Alex.
So again, the general conditions, uh, those were the final costs that came in after the demo projects were complete. Uh, we're giving back site services, so like my time, Patrick's time, Chelsea's time, all those, uh, costs, and then reimbursables, uh, a little add there, and then overall the construction manager fee is a give back there. So that's how we come up with a negative hundred and twenty thousand going back.
Okay.
Any questions? This is just the backup, uh, we came up with that number, with all the projects listed.
And that money goes where? Like, the hundred and twenty thousand?
Um, it goes into, uh, it'll stay in a billing account until you tell me what you want to do with it.
Okay.
There's no other questions, so I'll ask for approval for the give back.
Can I get a motion for the amendment number seventeen?
Don't move.
Motion by, second by, Dr. Westby, any discussion? None, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
I think that was a record for help with amendments, so, thanks.
Uh, consent agenda, so everything, I think there's no edits on there at all, I think we're all set. Can I get a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I will make that motion.
Go.
If I have a comment, could I do that after?
Discussion.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll second.
A second by Bonner, any discussion?
Oh, yes, I just want to thank, I saw where the, um, Seroptimus, um, donated clothing, so I want to thank them. And also, uh, the Dollar Tree, um, gave supplies to the school, so I just want to thank them for doing that and appreciate it.
Okay. Excellent. Any discussion? All those in favor succeed, have they saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimously. Uh, six point one, community ed update. Who is it?
Good evening, everyone.
Chad.
So we'll start with the, uh, strategic plan, and I believe that's probably in your package. So as we look at it, uh, with our exploring, emerging, and sustaining, we've completed our exploring model, we've completed the emerging model, and we're moving into the sustaining model and everything that we set forth to do in that. So we're either on pace or maybe even a little bit ahead of pace for where I thought we would be when we first came up with this. As we move down the page to our lagging indicators, uh, in the red, you see the updated things. We've had over a hundred and fifty-four aquatics programs, two adult sports classes, a league, sixty-three youth enrichment and adult classes, the ninja program is flourishing, um, we've had over a hundred and thirty-five classes of programs offered to date with over eleven hundred participants this year alone. So we're moving forward and bolstering all of our programs, always looking for new programs. I've got three new programs sent, uh, offered either this spring or next fall, just for, um, catalog, a sign language class, a genealogy class, a writing class, a guitar lessons. Um, and those are just people that read that we were looking for instructors in the catalog. So as far as that goes, getting that information out there in that catalog was huge, that's.
It was, it was really nice looking.
Thank you.
The catalog was really nice looking. Are, do you have more classes this year than you've had in previous years?
Yeah.
It just seems to me, I, I see more being advertised, so I love that.
There, it's, believe we had seventy-eight classes last year.
Okay.
And we were already at a hundred and thirty-five this year.
Oh, that's great, I'm happy about that.
So we're always looking for more, um, more youth enrichment classes, those seem to be the hardest ones to fill is to find people that want to do stuff with the kids after school. So we're always looking for that. Talks about the flyer and the catalog, uh, that has been published, well, first one, of course, we were able to generate twenty-four hundred dollars in revenue through advertising. It's about half of what we wanted, but for the first attempt, I think that was pretty good to give. We're looking to get a little bit more, five thousand, maybe a little more, hopefully for the fall, we can get some more. Um, and I have had people contact me asking what they need to do to advertise in it, so I think we'll get close to that for the next one. Uh, school age childcare, that program has expanded from two buildings to three buildings now. We're having, uh, after school and before school care at all three elementary schools. Um, Parkview and North Star being the two that utilize it the most, uh, Laurentian. Uh, the before school Laurentian numbers never really came around, maybe that was because we were so late getting it out there. Uh, but we do have it available at all, and as far as total numbers, we've had over nine hundred, nine hundred students to date, and that was on February eleventh for after school care. And obviously that number is repeat kids, but it's still a good number to have. There was feasibility for school run daycare, after looking at it and looking at the numbers of what we've got going on in the district, uh, right now would not be a good time to move forward with the daycare program, even though I know that daycare is a shortage, but with everything we have going on in the district, uh, with the fourteen oh four and the special ed program and all of our budgetary constraints right now, it would be really difficult for us to start a, um, daycare, true daycare program in the district right now. That doesn't mean we can't look at it again, but my recommendation right now is that we kind of put that on the back burner and focus on our school age childcare, um, and expanding that possibly, I know with one daycare possibly closing in Virginia, maybe we can look to expand our Virginia hours from six o'clock to maybe six thirty, seven o'clock if needed next year to eliminate some of that, um, issues that we might have with transportation and crossing borderlines to get people to other district, or to the attendance districts. So maybe we can look at some of that for, as a solution for next year, and I'll be talking with Amanda and, and other people on that as we move forward and things get more simplified as far as that goes. But that program is running well, um, plenty of kids involved in it.
Are there some districts that have daycare, you know, from six AM to six PM?
There are some, there are not many, uh, but there are some, um, I know of one that actually rents out space to a daycare. So they've got a couple classrooms that they converted into daycare space, they don't, the district doesn't run it, but the daycare is run out of the school building.
Okay.
Uh, but it's not overly common to have, uh, a daycare facility run by the school, has a lot to do with the licensing and stuff like that that goes along with it.
Okay. Is it more prevalent in the cities? What'd you say?
Possibly, like you said, uh, I think it's actually probably more prevalent outstate, because in your, in the cities you have a lot more daycare facilities.
Okay.
Uh, the leading indicators, as we move down, families are eager to continue in effectively utilizing the school age childcare, I talked about that, we've got sixty kids per day on average. Um, we can operate right now up to about seventy kids with the current staffing that we have. Um, North Star has the lowest numbers, that's due mainly to the age of the students. The, the third through sixth graders don't require as much after school care, they can go home for an hour by themselves. A lot of times if they need to, especially if you've got the sixth graders, so they don't get as many at the North Star as they do at the Parkview and Laurentian. Uh, class evaluations have been, uh, positive, averaging a score of four out of five. Everybody who's taken a class that I've talked to has been really happy with them. Our wreath classes, our sled gaining classes, our, uh, strudel classes. So it's, it, we need more is what people are saying, is that they're happy with what, with the product that we're putting out there, and, uh, they're hungry for more classes, especially the cooking classes, they, they love those in our, in our culinary facility over there. People can't get enough of those.
Yeah.
Uh, the catalog has been a success, um, everybody who I have heard from has said that it looks nice, and it's, uh, about time that we've had this, that it's, uh, there, and for being a first effort at it, I thought it came out pretty good. Couple little flaws in there, uh, I'm not an editor, so, uh, a couple spelling errors in there, but we will work through those in the, in the future and get those out. It's also published online, and the nice thing about the online piece is, is it updates. So as a class falls off, I take it off of there, as a class comes in, like our sign language class was added, that goes on there, so people always have access to it online, and it's a live link, so anytime we change something, it gets updated online.
When will you send out the fall/winter one for, you know, like for next year, like?
Schedule date right now is the first week of school.
Oh, not till then?
Yeah.
Okay, so not in August at all?
Uh, if we can get it out in August, we will, but we have trouble getting people to commit to classes over the summer.
Oh, sure.
So we found that out last year when we were doing our initial development.
Okay.
Uh, though it is tough for us to get our people to commit, to get it into the catalog during the summer. If we can get it out earlier in August, we, we will.
Okay.
Um, but the hard part is getting people to commit to the classes.
Okay.
So, and to fill up a full catalog, we need to make sure we've got plenty of stuff in there. Uh, talks about social media and the effectiveness of it, every time we put a new class on Facebook, we automatically get one to four registrations off the Facebook post. So the Facebook post is very successful. We've talked about, and this, Julie Eddy and I have talked about it along with Stacy, is possibly adding to the district's Facebook account to make community ed kind of a standalone, um, so that we can do more, uh, advertising on there. Something that would run out of our office and, uh, Stacy wouldn't have to be the only one putting information out there. And it could just be giving us access to the admin, we can post through the school account, we don't know how that would, would completely look yet, or possibly expanding to some other social media aspects like Instagram or something like that, uh, because a lot of people utilize that, especially your younger people are using Instagram a lot more than Facebook. Talks more about the flyer, I said it, uh, I learned a lot about Canva in the last six months, so. So that was good, and we want to increase our revenue. So overall, community ed is moving in the right direction, uh, pushing things forward, getting more people involved and more classes offered.
That's good.
Awesome. Thanks for doing the sign language class too, by the way.
What's that?
Thanks for doing the class too, by the way.
Oh, it just, just happened, yeah, I got a call from a, a woman who wanted to do it after she saw the flyer. She said, I would love to do a sign language class.
That's awesome.
So it just worked out perfect.
I still want to do it too, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. All right, moving on. Uh, budget parameters, point two.
Good evening, I'm Andrea Lintola, this is, uh, back again tonight. Ted, um, you have my handout in your packet that you received, just going over some updated numbers again. Um, I heard earlier this evening, or actually today, a couple times how complex school finance can be, and it is, it's just complex, and I'm working on updating numbers and working on updating the payroll budgets that we have available to us, keeping in mind that when we settled our contracts for twenty-four and twenty-five, we had, um, larger increases than we had anticipated in our previous budgets, so, so that's something to keep in mind as you're looking at things. Also, um, the state of Minnesota did release, um, just recently, if it wasn't over the weekend or today, um, the Minnesota paid leave rate did get released of zero point eight eight percent of our wages, and that starts in January of twenty twenty-six. I'm also just working on information that's needed for our health insurance bid, that's, um, uh, every two year bid that we have to go through for a Health Insurance Transparency Act, so hopefully that will also help the budget. There's no guarantee because we're, um, just kind of projecting an increase, and then also keeping in mind, um, the expected expenses that we do have, remembering that we have that summer unemployment and the iPad lease, um, for year two that's coming up, and then also, also keep in mind for the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, and how that graduating class, um, is larger and kindergarten is expected not to be as large, um, and just keeping that in mind as we're moving forward with our budget process.
It is complicated. I told, um, Andrea that I, I was on the M D, M D E website last week and looking at some of the budget information and I listened to some Zoom meetings or whatever, and there's all these variables, you know, from one formula to the other, so I can see why it can't be, you know, in concrete yet until we, you know, know a lot. It's.
That's the hard part, it is, um, you know, I had made an adjustment with using the different enrollment, um, the less aggressive progression method, and I made that adjustment, so you'll see that on that column too, so. That was an adjustment that was made just due to some updated information.
I was wondering about, um, the science curriculum, is that something that, you know, you have to do so many years? Is ours, you know, obsolete, or I was just wondering, is that a necessity for next year?
Uh, you're going to get to wade into that, um, this year, because last year the board delayed purchasing science curriculum, I think it was two hundred and fifty thousand listed that time. And so the elementary teachers, M C A is a test, science is a tested area, so it's a big area. Um, and so the, especially the elementary, they would like to get updated curriculum materials that match better the, um, M C A. Um, and so Alicia's been working with the elementary teachers, and they're looking to see if they can get that number down be, till, okay, what do we really, really, really need? Do we really need a hundred and fifty thousand, or is that something else? But I think you're going to get, you're going to hear something coming in on that science, but we may have to do something with it, because it is a tested area, um, along with the math and the reading.
Okay, and also I was wondering about the, um, social studies, and that's for twenty-six, twenty-seven, because I just read where now there's all these changes that are coming down. Uh, is this, you know, whatever they're looking at, does that have these, they won't have those changes, I'm sure.
And, uh, welcome to the social studies wars. Um, social studies is always the subject that gets the most conversation, and then, I'm going back years and decades and decades. It always gets the most discussion, it's going to be talked about again, um, this year. So Alicia, what you're looking at is there's a sequence and a pattern, so that you don't get hit with a million and a half of textbook requests all at once. Um, so we generally try to do one a year, and so social studies is coming up, now it'll be interesting seeing what happens between now and then, as far as with the standards, but most of the social studies But most of the social studies standards, I expect them to stay more or less the way they are. Cause most of the standards really are, people aren't arguing about them. It's only a small portion of them that there is up for debate.
Okay.
And I think the reason why we held back on the science last year was we thought that would help us with our budget.
Mm-hmm.
So we might do that with the social studies too this year, maybe.
Since we're having a discussion, I'm just wondering, um, budget of the whole committee, do we have, yeah, do we have any upcoming plans to speak to like Cassandra's point?
Wait for my riveting superintendent update. I'm gonna talk about that.
And I'm glad you asked that, cause he did say he was gonna mention that later.
I was gonna ask that myself. And, um, was there any, um, realized savings from closing the, the other campuses and all the, uh, uh, like your heat and electric utility bills?
So after analyzing some of the utilities in the past year, um, I did need to talk with another staff member who's been out. So we weren't able to, um, look at that in depth over, cause we had a couple of questions in some of those bills and how that we coded them. So we wanted to make sure with the closing, especially of the Atlas campus now.
Yeah, I was hoping that that was gonna be significant enough to maybe soften the blow on some of this stuff. Um, so.
It's not gonna be as happy as you hope it would be for those significant energy savings. As we know, we've all felt the energy, you know, increases to in our, um, just with inflation. But we are, we will look at it. It's just, it's on the agenda to talk with. We've just had a staff member that I haven't been able to get in touch with to look at it better.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Wait, we let her off? Yeah. Uh, six point three, uh, Cora's not here. Did she talk to you?
She didn't. She didn't.
Okay, were we going to do, what about, you know, we were going to hire another student rep?
Yeah.
We definitely, we def- yeah. And she had said that she would like to have somebody to kind of give a rundown to and stuff before she graduates as well.
So, yeah, we definitely need to get on that.
We definitely need to get on that. I don't know if we talked to Mark, uh.
Mark Winters has been here during some of those discussions. So, uh, can you reach out to him, Noel, and?
Yes. And it's really kind of you saying of those who volunteered, here's when we can do it and then we just kind of go from there. Uh, and that's the date that you would, and we'd figure out the interviews and schedule and he'd get the kids down and everything else like that. So part of it is you telling me what day or Mark, what day you want to talk to the kids, the ones who applied.
And I think it was personal committed. There, uh, you guys have received applications for?
No, not yet. He's saying not yet.
For the, for the, um, for the other person.
No, not for next, not, not for next year, no.
Okay, well, we'd like to.
I'll talk to Mark.
Definitely, we'll, we'll have to, we're way behind on it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Have to get two, yeah.
Well, yep, so we have to get two.
We have to.
A junior and a senior. This.
Yeah, Cora's gonna graduate this year.
Cora's, she's a senior, so we'll, she's a senior and a junior.
And actually. It might be smart to get two because we're halfway through the year already. So maybe we should.
Well, it's usually, yeah, junior and a senior.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause there was something that was just, uh, proposed in the legislature. I mentioned to Tim about it, but, uh, it just came out, I think today I saw that. We all, we all, they're gonna want to require, I mean, it has to be voted on everything, but they want to require two students have to be on our board and give them the voting rights. That just came, that, that's what this bill is, so. I, hopefully it gets, we'll see what happens back to the day.
See what happens.
So are we saying that we should do the two, do the, like a sophomore and junior this year and then for next year? Because we, we are behind, aren't we?
I think we should do two.
Yeah.
Because then when Cora graduates, we'll have two, we'll be, we'll be ahead in the game.
New year.
Yeah, and then they'll both learn a little bit from Cora as well. Right?
I think Mark has some apps for you to look at now to finish out the year. I think he does.
Great, if he did. I definitely want their voice up the table.
Yeah, one last thing. I think, um, you know, Lisa ma- mentioned that we go to the personnel committee. But, um, I think Brandy and I had said that we would like to be involved in the interview. So I guess we would have to decide which, who would handle that.
For what?
Well, you would be.
For the, this is a school rep?
For the personnel, yeah. And if it would go to the personnel or we had decide, or the board, we talked about, Brandy and I had volunteered to.
And let, if you have an objection, but just have those two do it. Or have a third person. If somebody from the personnel.
The personnel committee is Brandy, John, and Jennifer, so.
Yeah, that, I have no objection. Um, we just had personnel committee the last time. That's why I said.
And you could still do it that way, but we had talked about it at a party.
Right, you're right. You said that, I remember. Yeah.
Why don't we have, uh, Brandy and Nicole and Jennifer do it then?
Uh, Jennifer, are you interested or?
I'd be, that'd be fine.
So then we'd have to coordinate a date, but I feel like we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. So be twos graders and lemons graders.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's smart to get, cause we're always behind the eight call.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay, I agree.
Okay. Moving on, uh, six point four, North Star Elementary, Principal report with Mr. Scott Manning.
Now I'm gonna talk about, I only have four slides. My first slide is gonna be what we're doing now. My next slide is gonna be where we're going. The third slide is gonna be what makes us unique at Rockridge and specifically North Star Elementary. And the fourth slide is our dad to prove it's working. So first one is our reading champions program. We are the first school in Minnesota to partner with U S Steel on reading champions. And it's actually with the Pittsburgh Penguins, cause that's where U S Steel's headquartered. Um, so it's all, it's hockey based and that's great to think about this time of year, especially Thursday night. Um, and it's nice that many of us have deep roots in mining. I'm the grandson on both sides of underground miners. And we can partner with local businesses. If you notice, the Hometown Focus has done articles the last few weeks with our student book reviews. Uh, we're gonna do our celebration in April and U S Steel is generous enough to donate a book vending machine to North Star Elementary for next year.
Ooh.
That's huge. That's so cool. How does, can I ask, how does that work? Like, what does that like do? Like you, how does that work?
It's like a candy vending machine, but with books. I don't know if we give cards out and they use those and.
Check it out and then.
Credit cards.
Yeah, so it'll be interesting how it, how it is.
That's awesome though. Yeah.
So, um, the next one, if you wanna hit the next one, Bill, you got the remote. Oh, I got the remote. Perfect. Thank you. Is our school, our responsibility, our job fair is gonna be Wednesday, May twenty-first. And many of you, of you've heard this before, but. Our students have jobs this year, but next year they'll be applying for jobs. So each grade is creating different sets of jobs. So our kids are gonna learn real world application skills. Um, they're gonna learn as they interview for their jobs, professional communication. It's gonna teach real life because some students aren't gonna get the jobs they really want. And then they're gonna find out why. So they can learn from that. Um, it encourages ownership and one of the best things is it does, is that they take care of the building. I don't know if you've noticed, but our kids are doing an amazing job taking care of our building, taking care of the community. The Hometown Focus has written an article about all our students that are shoveling around the neighbors coming up.
Yep. Yep.
So if you go out there on the day after it snows, it's, it's a great sight to see. Um, the next one is what makes us unique. North Star Elementary has a construction lab. So our students have been learning, our fifth grade students have been learning construction skills all year. And this entire week, they're going over to the high school and partnering with the high school construction lab. And they're building some items that they're actually gonna be selling out to the community. Um, so if you notice, it's been really nice that our, uh, our juniors and seniors are working with our fifth graders. On specific construction measurement, all of those skills. So hats off to Mr. Foster, Mr. Little for getting this going. Um, W D I O News will be out on Wednesday to do a story. So, great work there.
Is it all the fifth graders or just certain classes?
It's certain classes now, but we're gonna build for next year to be able to have more classes go. This is our first run. We gotta do kind of our pilot this year with it. And that could be one of our, one of the jobs is our construction club. And then my last one is our dad. And I wanna go over this. Uh, first one, this is in math with all of our third grade. Our high risk group dropped from fifteen percent to ten percent halfway through the year. Our third, we had one third grade class. In that class, forty-eight percent had typical growth, but thirty-six percent of that class had aggressive growth in that third grade class. Our A math fifth grade dropped from nineteen percent to eleven percent for high risk. In fourth grade, we have one class that only five percent of the students are at high risk. And then our sixth grade dropped from twelve percent to seven in the high risk group. And then our A reading, I looked at the college pathways. Right now, our A reading sixth grade grew from twenty-seven to thirty-eight percent. That means they are college ready in the sixth grade. Our fifth grade grew from twenty to twenty-five percent. We have a third grade class right now that it grew to fifty-two percent. Half the kids in that class are college ready in third grade. They're, it, on that path. So it was great work. And then our fourth grade, we had a group that dropped from twenty-three to fourteen percent in high risk. So what I'm saying is at North Star, it's working, cause the teachers, and I'll give a hundred percent of the credit to this, to the North Star teachers and staff. Um, they are buying in, the students are buying in. Um, and if you, come on over to North Star, it's an incredible experience.
Very cool.
Very aw- awesome. Great job. Yeah.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Is, is Fastbridge the, the data program that you use to get the percentages?
Yes, it's, yeah, it's the universal screener, as they call it. Um, and then we can look at both, if you noticed at, we can look at where they sit compared to the norm, like if they're college ready. And then we can also look, which I think is more important, at the growth. So individual students, you know, it doesn't matter where you start, you can grow and how much you grow. So this is our first year using Fastbridge.
I was gonna ask Ms. Vanny, um, do you have an Indian ed specific room at your school?
Yes.
You do? Okay. I didn't, I wasn't sure if all the schools had, had that. Okay.
Yes, we have that.
Okay.
So, alright.
I, I just have one question too. So this is your first year in the new building.
Yep.
And, um, how, you know, we've heard, we heard concerns when it opened about, um, all the glass and the open classrooms. And I'm just wondering how, how you see it's working out? How, how is it going so far?
I like the glass because if we notice historically, students misbehave in places where people can't see them. When there's lots and lots of glass, you know, kids aren't running in the halls anymore, cause everybody can see them. Um, there are times where it is a little distracting, I won't lie on that, but I like having the glass. And it's fun for me as, as a principal, when I can walk by, I can look in every single classroom and see what's going on.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott?
Um, just one more thing. I did meet with the Virginia City Council about a week and a half ago, kind of concerns with North Star. And one of our big ones this spring is gonna be, we created the nicest park on the Iron Range. Sometimes people walk through it during the day. And even though we've had families that have taken their kids out to play, have ran kids out to play during the day when school's going on. So it's just working with the community on that.
And do we have signs? Were we talking about having signs about like it's school hours and things like that or?
Yeah, we have signs. We actually have sledding signs too, if you notice where you're supposed to slide and where you're not supposed to slide.
Perfect.
Now we just need a little more snow, cause the hill's kind of muddy right now.
I, I've seen a lot of sledding this weekend there.
Yes, it, it gets used a lot.
That's great.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Very nice.
Uh, six point five, Superintendent report, Dr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Director Yuha. So, um, the budget, let's go. That's the main thing I wanna just, uh, talk about here. And then, uh, you can kind of tell me how you want this to go. So you heard Andrea give a couple of times, she's given you some budget updates. On the number of kids we have, the revenue and the expenses. And so as you can see, we're going to need to make some balancing. And this has been a long time coming. This isn't a new issue. And so, couple things. One is that, remember, um, when you hired a group to do academic return on investment and they were on the Zoom call up there? So I had another, Alicia's been working with them a lot, cause they're looking at especially the curriculum side of the equation, um, with the programs. And so we met with those folks, um, today, actually. And so you'll have that update here, I think by your next board meeting, hopefully. Um, your regularly scheduled board meeting, which should be on the tenth of March, I believe. So you're gonna get an update from that along with the other budget information.
Yeah.
So when we go into the budget cycles like this, a key date we have to pay attention to is April first. If any tenured teachers are let go, we have to let them go before April first. So that's a key date. We don't have to have, or you don't have to have all of your budget information done and all your budget decisions done by then. But you do need to have your decisions done as it relates to any tenured teacher. That means you have next board meeting, the tenth, and then the one after that. And plus any other work-study session or other school board meeting that we put in there, uh, to kind of get this figured out. And so you've kind of had a lot of information given to you over the past two months about the state of Minnesota, how the budget process works. You've seen a bunch of information comparing us to other districts as far as endless capital, L T F M, uh, free and reduced. How much money is coming for this? A levy referendum. And so you've had all that information. So now we're getting to the nitty gritty. So the process for this is that I already have started, and I'll work some more with the principals on this. Uh, but this is not going to be, um, this is not gonna make everyone happy. Uh, because the numbers we're looking at, we're going to, and you heard the speaker earlier, uh, the parent talking about, consider other things. We will need to look at everything and some other things. And we may need to look at some areas that normally you won't look at. I think we're gonna have to go, um, look at it because, uh, about eighty percent of your total budget are salaries. So that's really where most of the money is. And one thing I want to make clear and also for the folks, uh, listening right now. Uh, you heard Pete doing an update on the construction. All of those construction dollars and the money that went into them are completely separate. From you running your school district and the money you have. It is a completely different account. And the state of Minnesota will not let you take money from the construction account and move it over to here to run your day-to-day. It's a. In the private sector, they don't worry about this. They can move money wherever they want to. You can't. And so that's a big distinction because you've probably heard people say, um, oh, you built a nice new building. Um, and then you're laying off a staff member. It's a completely different question. The money pots are completely different. So on the process for the budget process, uh, this is one that's gonna make almost no one happy. Uh, it's not gonna make the admin group happy, the teacher group, the ask me group, the board group, the parent group, cause you're gonna have to look everywhere. So, um, we can do this one of two ways. We can, we really need to start, um, or keep going on specifics on March tenth. So I've heard from you clearly say up to this point that you'd rather this be done as a full school board session. Rather than normally we, years past, we'd always start in committees. So I'm looking, heads nodding, and you're still saying you want this to go in full board. So on the tenth, we can either do it during a full regular board meeting, start that with the details, or we can, uh, I guess, Director, you the, I'm looking at you, cause you're the school board chair right now.
I am.
Um, work-study session.
I would prefer like a work-study session.
I would too, a hundred percent, yes.
But I would be, March tenth, Lisa's running the, running the ship here, so. But I would prefer like a.
You, you won't be here on the tenth?
I won't be on March tenth.
Lisa won't be here on the tenth and I will not be here on the tenth.
We got, um.
We have M S, M S B A Day at the Capitol on the tenth. So I was gonna suggest that we move the tenth meeting to another, like the eleventh or something.
It's your call.
Are you, we, you won't be available?
I'm out for a while. So I'm on my vacation, so.
So, yeah, Lisa will have to take over your vice chair.
Yeah. Yeah, so she'll run the. I'd have to switch some.
Well.
Appointments around on that day.
And we already probably have a meeting on the third.
Yes, but that's for a different purpose.
Right, right. Yes.
Um, could, could we move it to, well, no, I suppose we can't move it to the third, the regular meeting and the work session. I mean, that'd be a lot on the third. You mean next week?
You mean next week?
No.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have a meeting on March third?
Yeah, we are. Did I miss that at the beginning?
It's a, no, it's a, you know, you could. It's all, it'll be a lot.
The diversity.
Well, I think we should all be here for the working session. There are as many that can.
My, my problem would be I run up and watch my grandkids, so I'd have to do some finagling.
On the third?
No, on Tuesday. Otherwise, I make it on the Tu, yeah, yeah.
We don't have to do it on Tuesday either. We can do it any day. I mean, just choose a day.
The next day would be a Friday, that I'd be available that Friday.
Is everyone gonna be here on the third? Able to?
Yeah, that would work for me as well.
I wonder if we could meet after the other proposed meeting.
You could, you tell me.
I think we should. I, I would think we should go on the third and have our working session after the other meeting.
Would we have the information that you were talking about from the, or the report?
I'd do my best to have that. And then regardless of what date you pick, so you have something to start with. I'm gonna do what I did last year, what I've always done. I'm gonna give you some starting ideas. I'm gonna give you some options, scenarios, and then you can start from there. And these will be worse, these will be, I'll start on the high side, and then you kind of take a look at them and you can go through them and say, I like this, no, I don't like that. You can start thinking about that. You won't have to make any decisions whenever this first meeting is, but I think you need to have something to look at first with some options.
And this information's coming from you and the admin?
Yes.
Okay.
On March third?
I do think that's probably good, it's better to do.
We have a meet-confirm meeting also on March third.
Yeah, four.
At four.
And.
Mm-hmm. Meet-confirm meeting at March third on half-four o'clock.
So there's three meetings now?
No, there's, there's.
The only other thing I could say is if I forewent the, forewent going down, but, and then.
Yeah, I, I have, but I'm just going one of these side rooms for the MSBA Day at the Capitol hour session on the third.
At what time?
It's your meeting, so you tell me when you want to meet.
You guys do it.
I'm, I'm free all of that Monday, so.
What, what time is the proposed meeting on the third?
Six-ish.
Oh, not until six?
Whatever, so we have a meet-and- confer at four. I'm getting confused by our meetings.
So you'd have the meet-and- confer maybe?
It would be a lot on the third.
That would be three things on the third then?
Yes.
Thirty, okay, so I was thinking we.
Well, actually, four, because you'd have your meeting, your, your working session for the budget and finance, your diversity meeting.
Diversity meeting.
And then your, so it'd be four things for them.
Yeah, that's probably too much, I'm thinking.
You guys would know.
Well, just because we don't even know how long, we don't want to have anything short either.
So the only thing that I can offer for myself is either do it that following Friday, and you'll be on vacation and I'll run the meeting, or I confer going down. That's, I mean.
Fridays are really a difficult day to have a, have a meeting.
So.
At night, yeah. So the for-sure meetings that we have to have, we're gonna have the diversity one on the third, and you're having the meet-and- confer.
Meet-and- confer is on the third as well.
Or the following Monday, you'd be available too.
Then we're getting into the seven, yeah, I don't know. No, yeah, no.
I mean, if we're having to make these decisions by the end of the month, of March, we've got to get together, you know, soon. Could we meet on the fourth? For a working session?
We may be these typically during the day. It might be, we could run it at noon or nine o'clock.
You could, you could run it during the day.
I could, yeah.
It's fine for me.
But you're not available during the day though, are you? And Jody, I'm sure wouldn't be.
Yeah, he'd be working, for sure.
But at least I feel like we do, even if we can't all be there, like, it's important to get the ball rolling and, you know, information out.
Yeah. I mean, I can do my best to see if I can free myself for that Tuesday, but sitting here and not talking to anybody, I just don't know.
You can.
On, on the weeks that we don't have a regular school board meeting, I work at, at work Tuesdays and Thursday evenings from four-thirty to six-thirty. My second job.
Busy. He's got stuff. Tough to figure this one out. I don't know what's best.
What about March fifth? I'm just marching down the week.
I'm okay, this is terrible. This is, this is, I thought this was gonna be, you know, easy meeting. I don't know when basketball stuff is, that's the only thing for me.
No.
But whatever.
Oh, yeah, that's a hard state too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's hard to state.
Well, there's, there's just playoffs going on, and it might be on Wednesday, I don't know. But that would be my only.
Should those who can meet on Tuesday during the day?
So we get it right away to the fourth?
Yeah, on the fourth?
Well, who could do it? Brandy can't, Jody can't.
I can.
Can you?
I can.
You can?
I will do my best to make the arrangements.
Are you okay with that, or do you want to propose a different time?
Okay, so this is for budget.
Budget.
Yes, yeah.
If it was early in the morning, I could.
If you guys can all do it, go ahead and do it. If I can try and rearrange some things, I will. So we can do March fourth, then go for it.
Good time, John, for you, good for you, all day, anytime.
I'm, I'm fine.
I'm free all day, my other.
And if I could be home by nine-thirty, I would be free and clear no matter what, but I will try to, you know.
Do eight o'clock, March fourth, I break up, I'm off at school, come right here, I can do that.
Eight o'clock?
No, don't do eight. I come up here to rehab at eight in the morning. You, you don't want to be in that traffic at eight o'clock.
I'm already in there, man, every day.
Right, exactly. Everybody else is due.
We could do eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Eight?
Thirty?
Eight, eight-thirty, it's fine by me.
Eight thirty?
I might be able to make that work.
Okay, that would be good.
Okay.
Eight thirty, okay.
Whew, that was the rush.
Sorry, I thought that.
That's only one hurdle, because now the regular meeting for March tenth, because I'm gone, she's gone.
Well, we'll be back by.
Won't we be back by six?
We have meetings until three in the afternoon.
Yeah, it'll be, that's why.
Maybe until seven.
Okay, but then that's another thing, do we switch that meeting? Because we'll have a lot of board members gone, and we don't know if we even have a.
Form.
We won't, hopefully we have a forum.
I, I mean, I'll be here on the tenth.
So we're gonna do a.
Jody just has to be here.
Is that on the fourth at eight-thirty in the morning, working?
Working session here.
Okay. Budget, working session.
Budget.
Okay.
Budget, right here.
Right here.
Right here, okay.
That helps, get that out of the way.
Yeah, thank you.
So then as of this minute, we're just keeping the tenth regular session on the books. It's still there.
I'd say yes.
For those who can make it.
I'd say yes.
Or do we want to move it, somebody said moving it to seven, that way we'd make sure we'd be here by then.
I would be okay with that.
You can move it to seven.
I'm fine with that, too.
That's fine.
I feel like that's probably better, because there's just a chance that there wouldn't be a forum, so.
Right, okay.
Does that work for you, Tim? Let's do it at seven, the meeting, the regular meeting at seven?
Okay.
It's fine.
Do it work on?
Yeah.
Okay, so what you can expect on the March fourth, eight-thirty in the morning, work-study session. When you come in here, you'll open the meeting like you normally do. Andrew will give you any update budget-wise that she has. And then we'll talk, hopefully we'll have the return on educational equity, academic equity will be there for you to look at. But then I'll also have some scenarios for you to look at as far as giving you different options, different ways that you can take a look and solve the budget. And we'll have, part of it will be on the expense side, but we'll also need to look at the revenue side because last year, two of the things you did on the revenue side was you looked, you did charge parents for the pre-K, early childhood, and that has worked as far as budget goes, keeping teachers. In addition to that, you also started an ALP right through on the other side of these walls over here. You started an ALP, and the goal was to keep kids in school rather than having them drop out. And you have about forty kids in the ALP, and that's about the number of kids you need to have to make that program. So those two did, they appear to be working on the revenue side of the equation. So, but I'll have a bunch of options for you to take a look at.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's it.
Oh, I was gonna ask you, Noel, remember that video that we saw down at the MSBA? The Yeti video, remember that, that you showed?
Yes.
During your presentation? Are we gonna put those up at all, or, because it was such good information?
Well, the, yes, we can do that. I've already tortured some of your board members around the table with my pictures. And I've tortured all of your teachers, all of your principals and everyone else.
Also, they're, okay.
The ones you saw there.
That was done by them.
Okay.
Yes, because I've shown them.
That one was made up by the Cunningham, wasn't it?
The whole, yes, except for the two, except for the two Rock Ridge.
Okay.
My kindergarten drawings, doodlings. But the other whole slide was by, but I will try and get it from Fluger.
Okay. Because I think we should, you know, put that up.
For like the community or?
Why would we do?
Torture the community. Who else has been tortured, right?
We're trying to protect Noel.
Okay.
All right. He's a good speaker, because he's not a very good drawer. We all, we all, we all know that. Six point six, Tris' report, can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Lisa.
I'll second.
Second by, about any discussion? Eric, not all those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passed unanimously. Six point seven, we have add to the agenda for Mr. Grayson. Comes, comes from behind the post.
That's right, it was hiding back there. Good evening. So basically, we're looking through the same kind of strategic plan stuff that we saw with Community Ed earlier. If you can take a look at the sheet in front of you there. Under our lagging indicators, you can kind of see an orange where we were achieving last year, and the red is currently where we're at today. So right now, all of our students, K through twelve, have an iPad. And our pre-K students, we've got one for every two children in the, in the pre-K area, so they can use those as needed in that, at that level. And all of our staff members have a laptop and a, and an iPad to use to help drive their instruction and collaboration as they work with the academy models. So we've completed that one, which is really nice to see. Door access and classroom AV systems and cameras are installed per specifications. So in all of our, all of our schools, we've got access control across all doors and camera coverage of all areas inside and out.
Excuse me?
We took a little step back, a setback on that two weeks ago. We had a hungry mouse eat through some fiber. And we lost all of our connectivity out to the ball fields, but we're hoping to have that back up and running on Wednesday of this week. So we've been working through that process. But we do have all of our camera coverage up across the whole district, every school. And that, that helps our administrators see what's going on in their areas. We've gone through all of the old buildings, the Evlith campuses and the Virginia campuses. As we were tearing those down and getting those emptied out, we went through all of the available technology that was left in those. And we identified things that we wanted to take forward and use for education in our new schools and things that we thought, well, these are still valuable, and we, we set those up for sale through the, the different due debt, due bids and things of that nature. And then we identified the things that were beige, you know, old technology, and got rid of that stuff. And so a lot of that stuff, we couldn't sell, we got it recycled and got it taken care of that way. So that, we've gone through all of the old facilities at this point, and all of that is completed. That's a really big workload off of our team, which is really nice to have that out of the way. So that was kind of removing all the old technology that we've got there. So leading indicators, teachers are collaborating on instructional topics. Rock Ridge High School teachers are beginning to collaborate in some departments, cross, cross department. So we're seeing, you know, we've got marketing happening where they're interacting with our design classes and things like that. So we've got some kind of cross-curricular things happening there, which is really nice to see. Kind of one of the focuses we've got with the academy models. So we're continuing to work on that. Students leading instruction. You know, we've got students, especially in the broadcast area, that are really doing an amazing job. That is one of the areas where I've seen students kind of take the lead, and they're showing teachers how to use the equipment, how to get things set up and, and work with those models, which is really nice. Our students, a week and a half ago, were live streaming the state Alpine and Nordic ski tournaments for the state of Minnesota. So the actual state tournaments were being broadcast by Rock Ridge students, which is.
Yeah, it's very cool, yeah.
Even at thirty-eight, below zero.
Yeah.
So, let's see, we've got all the usable technology components moved out, so that's complete. And then door access and all those things are ongoing as we work on getting things set up, especially at the ALP here and then fourteen oh four, as we start getting that rolled out for our special ed program. We'll get that set up as well. Any questions about any of this?
Um, I do.
Yeah.
Uh, as far as under sustaining and extending, it says also that K through twelve have a device. Why do we want elementary kids to all have a device?
Sure, so a lot of our curriculum is iPad-based, right? So all of that reading curriculum and math curriculum is available on the iPad. So instead of them having to print off worksheets, they're able to do it on the device in that manner. So, and it's obviously, it's a time and place base. It's not like our kids in the elementary school are sitting on one of these things all day long, right? So as they have projects that, it makes sense, it really helps extend that learning. Having the cameras on there allow them to make little videos and things like that. Those are a lot of collaborative tools that we like to see students use. It really helps them show what they know in a different way. Instead of having them write a story about something, they can make a little video about it, right? And so it's a different way that they can show their knowledge.
They do quizzes and quiz with.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I get that. My son's in fifth grade and he has one, and I see the value in that because he even did a Native American, you know, he made a presentation, and which was super cool. But I just, for the little kids, I didn't know, but that does make sense, so thank you for explaining.
And, and they're not spending all day on it.
Correct.
They don't take them home until, what, third grade?
Uh, fifth grade.
Oh, fifth grade, yeah.
And board members, I would say, when I wander through the three elementaries, North Star, Laurentian, Parkview, I rarely see the entire class on iPads. They're usually doing something else, so they're not on the, those iPads very long each day if they're on them. Otherwise, I'd see it a lot more.
Yeah, they're used like any other learning tool that we have for the students, right? You're not gonna always be out, you know, using microscopes and things like that. As, as you find a need for them in the, in the education day, that's when you pull those out and start using them.
Do you find that most of the teachers use both the iPads and the laptops?
Yeah, we do a lot. There's times when a teacher will be presenting off of their iPad. So in all the classrooms, we've got it set up. The way we've set up the classrooms are with, you know, the eighty-six inch interactive TV at the front of the room. That they can walk up, if they don't want to use a computer or an iPad, they can walk up at the front of the room and they can teach off of that touchscreen, okay? All their curriculum can pop up on there and they can teach that way. They can also have their iPad and they can air, wirelessly present that to the display as well. And so they can be walking around the classroom, moving through a presentation on there as they're working with their kids, showing off that, that content there. And they can also be doing the same thing with their laptop. They also have the ability to plug their laptop into the, to the wall, and then their laptop screen shows up and they can go up to that touchscreen and interact with their computer in front of the kids and show content that way, which really helps seeing that visually for the students.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Bill?
No, I think we're good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, no, six point eight, at least added this to the agenda, event parking at high school?
Right, so when we were at the game on Friday, the girls' basketball game, I asked my husband, I said, because I had pneumonia, I said, could you just drop me off at the doors? Well, then when he drove up, he sees buses only. So he's like, I'm not driving you up there. So I walked from the back forty to the doors. And then I get up there and all these cars are lined up, because there's no handicap signs where the buses are. So I'm just wondering, and then we had a few people, and I know Nicole's dad care, you know, has a cane that he walks in with. And there's uneven snow in a lot of areas. And the handicap parking is behind that fence. So I'm just wondering, can we put out either different signs, you know, like after hours? Or make a few of those, put them out during the games, so that, I, I had a few people come and say something to me and a couple to Jody about the, you know, the parking and the way it is. And when I came up to that fence, it was actually worse than if I parked over here because I had to go down, I couldn't just walk across, I had to go down the fence and around. So.
Because there's an opening.
If we could brainstorm of how to do it. If we could brainstorm of how to do it costing, you know, a little amount of money but making it convenient for people with-
People that need it.
Yeah.
I know exactly what you're talking about. We talked about this at the last admin meeting and it is a problem. And those cars you see, most of those cars are either our staff members or their kids' cars. They're not people who are coming to the game to watch. It's usually our athletes or our coaches or some other adult who are taking those slots that they shouldn't be. So Mike Hogan's having some signs made, so we're going to put some signs out there that you can move in and out to get those cars out of there because they're not supposed to be there.
Yeah.
Because if we do have someone who needs to get dropped off like this, we want them to be able to do it. We need to get all of those cars out of there. These are able-bodied people who are parking there, they're not supposed to be parking there and sometimes they gum it up. You can't get a vehicle through there sometimes because of how they're parking. So it is an issue, Hogan's on it. And if what we're trying now doesn't work, then we're going to have to get all of the cars out of there.
Well, they're making those temporary handicap spots for events, I think makes sense.
I think so, I think so too, yeah.
That fence is a weird spot and if there's no cut in the middle, I don't know why.
There's no cut in the middle, you have to go to the side and walk.
It's a safety issue though for the school during the day because that's where the buses go, so you don't want the kids just walking free-for-all. So get it, there's like a few issues.
Well, the problem is, is the kids driving there, drive right through a sign, by a sign that says buses only, but they think they can do it. So we should, we should tag all their cars and send them to English class.
And I don't know why my husband didn't, but he turned right around, he says, well, there's a sign there. So he just-
Well, yeah.
Plays by the rules.
Yeah, I do make my husband drop me off there, so whatever.
I think we all got, I, I had a couple calls on that.
Yeah, and also there was something about snow, like there was snow in the way, like how it was plowed. I don't, do you recall that Lisa, having-
I, I don't recall hearing that, but I know in walking, walking from this parking lot, I mean, I know the kids stomp down the sto- snow when, you know, it snows at 6:00 in the morning and they're coming in, you know, you can't keep up with it with maintenance. But when we have an event, you don't want somebody slipping on crutches or, I mean, even during the school day, but. So even, I think we got to heating that up on the, on the pathways, but. And maybe change that sign to say after hours, something, something so that people know that there are handy, because in the dark, you can't, you don't, you can't see the area very well.
Parking, I mean, the thing is too, kids park there, I guess, I don't know, maybe I guess they don't need to at all, but I'm just thinking they practice, you know, every day.
They don't need to park that long.
Yeah.
They're young, they should be walking 40,000 steps a day anyway.
You're right, good point.
And normally that's what my husband would do with me, he'd park me way over here. The back 40 to the front 40, that's him, but, yeah.
And it'll be busy this Wednesday night, I don't know if it'd be melted.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it'll be busy for the playoff.
I think the time has changed too, I think to 4:15, but don't-
And we'll also have our athletic director who will make some announcements in the building, so we don't have people parking there.
But I, I would really like to see the handicap signs for, for sure.
Should be there.
For game days.
For game days, yeah.
Yep.
For other events.
After hours or whatever, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Good topic.
Okay.
Or events, like, you know, in the-
Admin items?
7.1, consider approval of resolution appointing election, election judges and healthcare facility election judges.
So move to Ridden?
Motion by Ridden.
I'll support.
Motion by Calverdall, any discussion?
Uh, go ahead.
Is-
It's a resolution.
Roll call, yeah.
I do have a question, how are we going about appointing these election judges? What's the details on this in the process?
The, I, Stacy is the one who does it, she, it's kind of her job to do. Basically, she is begging, borrowing, pleading with people to be election judges because most people don't want to be election judges. And so she is getting anybody she can, who is above board, who will, and most of our election judges, they're really good. They take their job very seriously, which we want them to. But that's where she's getting them from and she, and she's always trying to find election judges.
Yeah, because the appointing, that was my-
You're the appointer, so you don't have to do it. But since you're the legal entity, only you can ultimately do that. She can suggest, but that's it.
And a lot of them are repeat people that have done it for years.
Just trying to find them.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Director Bonner?
Yes.
Director Westry?
Yes.
Director Uvansy, yes, Director Calverdall?
Yes.
Director Lotter?
Yes.
Director Erden?
Erden, yes.
That's what I said.
I know.
Motion passes unanimously. Meeting announcements, the next regular meeting will be Monday, March 10th at 7:00.
Now, does that have to-
Has to be posted in the law.
Do we have to change it to a special meeting or?
Well, your 10th is still good, only March 10th. But now you're adding, you're creating another one, which will be on March 4th at 8:30.
Yeah.
But we're changing the time of the March 10th to 7:00 PM.
Not when you want it 7:00, so we'll have to publish that widely.
Okay, and the 4th is at?
8:30.
8:30. Okay.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support, and I would like to say good luck to all of our teams that enter class. Big hockey game on Thursday. Get out and support our teams as we enter class.
Yeah.
Next, any discussion? All is fair, so you want to say a?
Aye.
Good meeting, guys.
Thank you, everybody.